Clerk Segrist could call the roll.
All right, Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek is not here. Let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is present. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I'm here, hello.
And Supervisor Williams.
Hello.
Now I call for a motion to adopt the agenda with a couple minor adjustments.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the agenda with the removal of the public hearing and the removal of the consent calendar item C1. And I would just like to let the Board and the public know that items G1 and G... Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, item G1 and G2 change the language. The updated language is in the back, and each one of the trustees will have the updates to item G2 and then the updated map. I apologize for item, for G1.
All other elements on the agenda stay the same?
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion in front of us.
Second.
Those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now what we would like to do is move on to item G1. Consider approval... Oops, nope, nope, got to back up. This is that point in the evening. Is there any citizens' non-agenda comments? Any citizens' non-agenda comments? How about we start in the front?
Approve the minutes.
Oh, approval of minutes. Okay, before we get to citizens' comments, group slowing me down here. We need to approve a set of minutes. So call for a motion to approve a set of minutes, previous minutes.
Mister Supervisor, I move that the Board approve the minutes from the meeting on May 9th.
Second.
Sorry, Summer. All those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mister Supervisor, I move that the Board approve the minutes from the meeting on May 16th.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
And finally, Mister Supervisor, I move that the Board approve the minutes from the meeting that occurred on June 6th.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Very good. Now, we're at that point in the agenda for non-agenda items. If you're here to speak about an item that is not on our agenda this evening, now would be the time to do that. And I see a couple hands, so what I'd like to do is we'll start up front and then work our way back. So if you would, please approach the podium. Name, address, and we're asking that you limit the presentation to three minutes this evening if you could.
Okay, thank you very much, and good evening. I'm Greg Green, 468-90 Creeks Bend River Metal Subdivision along Gettys Road. And what I propose to bring to you tonight, and I know that you have heavy agendas and have to deal with a lot, is something that I've... It's a passion of mine and something I've been working on for well over a decade. As I'm a resident there and help the road clean up at Gettys, I see a lot of its problems. One is peeking its head out very, very vividly over and over again. Fortunately, as far as I know, it hasn't resulted in any traffic fatalities or serious injury. But let me backtrack a little bit. As you know, are aware, the township's sidewalks get built mainly through development. The development projects of subdivisions that border Wayne County or even NMDOT roads get done by the developer. But it doesn't always encompass every parcel because some landowners don't sell off to the main purchaser. So you end up with gaps. And as we know, the township has worked very hard to fill in gaps where they know that development is not going to take place. Gettys Road is one of those that has developed over time, and the south side of Gettys has sidewalk almost all the way from Canton Center Road to, almost to Denton. In fact, the Planning Commission just approved a preliminary plan of the subdivision at Gettys and Denton that you'll be seeing. That if that goes ahead, we'll pretty much complete sidewalk all the way down there, with the exception of three individual parcels. Two of the three parcels are pretty straightforward. They're just pretty flat land, and I'm sure that there's a procedure of getting the easements and getting those gaps filled. One in particular is not that easy. And I realize it's been a challenge for the decade, and it presents a lot of engineering and money. It is the area over the signs drain between Beck Road and Canton Center. I can show you... Would you mind if I pass you a couple of photographs?
Kind of need to look at one and then the other to kind of see the impact of this.
We have sidewalk all along the south side. You could walk to the Rite Aid Shopping Center, except when you get to the bridge, you've got to go into the roadway in order to cross the bridge and then get back to the sidewalk, and you go down a fairly steep grade to the next part of the sidewalk. Obviously, there are some engineering difficulties with that. There's going to be some cost associated with that. But I know the township is interested in creating pathways, walkways, a lot more pedestrian-friendly access. And this is one area that is a particularly sticky one. I think it's particularly dangerous. As you can see by the photo there on the bridge, when anyone is walking, riding, running, what have you, pushing a stroller, they are probably less than 10 feet away from traffic. And traffic consists of vehicles moving 50 miles an hour plus. And they're not all SUVs. Some of them are very big, heavy trucks. So, you know, we've got a situation there where people are in danger potentially. The vehicular traffic moves when they... If they cross when there's a person on that bridge, they move towards the center of that. And now they're endangering perhaps the oncoming traffic the other way because it's only two lanes in there. What I am expressing is the hope that we figure out a plan, maybe with the county, since it's over a county drain. I don't know... I've tried before. I've got letters to show that I've tried to get involvement. I've had the county commission come out and look at that bridge. At one time, they said, "Well, we can only construct a pedestrian bridge if the vehicular bridge is in need of repair." They had their people come out, and they said, "No, that bridge is fine." So nothing was done. Everybody else kind of signs off and says, "It's the township's problem, and I'm not sure there's money involved for it." Okay, so that's the bottom line, is that I'm hoping that as we complete building out the township and we complete creating the environment that I know we all want to have, that we won't overlook areas like this that, eh, they create a little difficulty. There's some potential ADA conflicts there because if I was using a stroller or wheelchair, there's no way I can go up that one slope to go on the road. I'd have to turn around and go back. You know, issues like that. I have seen mothers pushing strollers across that bridge. As I said, runners, walkers, bikers, I mean, everybody has to cross that bridge. There's no choice. So with that, I will leave that with you and hope that in future discussions, future study sessions, for your review, if you can look at that and perhaps put that high up on the list and, you know, perhaps figure out a strategy where we can get that done so that people can walk along there safely. Thank you.
Hear your comments, thank you. Mister Miller.
I have a receipt here. There is a complaint of barking dogs from my resident on the 30th. I'd like the Chief of Police to address this issue to him. I have a receipt here where a lady picked up the dogs, or dog, dogs. They're out of trainers on the 5th, 28th, and 17th in Fremont, Ohio. That's 150 miles from here. I happened to buy a Big Breakfast at a Mickey joint. It's dated on the 28th, Route 53, right across from a Walmart where I was supposed to meet this lady, in Ohio. You guys must have bionic hearing, that you can hear a dog 150 miles away, and it's been gone for two days. And it's probably in Connecticut by that time. The dog's in Maine, and I'm sick and tired of the police department coming out on the 30th and telling me dogs are barking, and they don't see them. They hear them. They didn't ever see the dogs barking. This... There's an ordinance, and it should be enforced, about municipality, bad use of police, municipality use. If there was a robbery, and I've asked this many times, on the other side of town, there were two police cars and four officers over there. How would you respond to a robbery on Ford Road? Quick as possible, and five minutes is too late.
Thank you, George, I appreciate it.
One other question. I like my three minutes.
Go ahead, George.
On the dump over here, we... Correct me if I'm wrong, I've looked into that for many years, 30 years. Like I said, they pay around $1 million a year. I've been in the tax record. A million and a quarter a year. They can walk away from that dump and turn it over to Wayne County in 30 years. There was another dump over there that the township bought. It's on record, public record, for $50,000. There's never been a 10-year plan or 5-year plan. I've asked for that, and there's been other situations where you've had five and a 10-year plan, but I can never get one out for that dump.
Thank you, George. Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, now we are going to move on to the general calendar. First item this evening is... I'm sorry? Whoa, everybody's got to slow me down tonight. I'm just ready to... I want to get back outside.
Mister Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Thank you very much. Madam Treasurer, could we get a support for that motion?
Second.
All those in favor of paying the bills this month again, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we can pay the bills. Thank you very much, guys. Now we're going to move on to the general calendar. I think the agenda's caught up to me finally. First item, G1. Consider approval of intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton Township for the construction... Oh, no. What have I got here? Yeah, I've got a church, right? Completely, so the updated would be...
No, we pulled this one. This one's good.
No, that's not. That's gone. Can I see yours? I need to get mine up online. No, just scroll down to item G1, and just get me right... There you go. Perfect. Oh, Jesus. Okay, let me... Yeah, okay, very good. Item G1 is considered approval of special land use and site plan for the Church of Jesus
Mister Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt this resolution as follows. Whereas the project sponsor, Mr. Phil Buffa, has requested special use and site plan approval for the Church of Jesus Christ to be located on the northwest corner of Ridge and Warren Roads, identified as the parcel in your packet and the additional parcel. And whereas the Planning Commission found the proposed special use and site plan to be consistent with the development objectives of the township and recommended approval. And whereas the Board has reviewed the proposed special use and site plan and determines the proposal to be consistent with the zoning ordinance, regulations, and development objectives subject to any conditions described in the analysis and recommendation form attached heretofore and made a part hereof, I move that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan hereby approve the request of the project sponsor to conduct the special use for the purpose for the proposed Church of Jesus Christ and approve the site plan subject to compliance with any conditions contained herein and all other regulations of the township.
Second. In terms of a little summary, the project sponsor proposes to locate a religious institution on the parcels identified at the northwest corner of Warren and Ridge Roads. Special land use approval was previously granted by the Board of Trustees at their meeting of September 23rd, 2014. Approval has since expired. Both the special land use and the request of the site plan are being considered at this time. A variance of Article 6.02U of the zoning ordinance was granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals to permit the church access Ridge Road, unpaved road. As a result, the site plan differs from that previously approved. Modifications to the other ordinance requirements were granted by the Planning Commission, as summarized in the background. Staff is recommending approval at this time. I believe we have in the audience Mister Phil Buffa. Thank you very much. If you'd like to speak, but also, Tim, is there anything additional we should add?
Now, just really looking at the screen, the primary change to the project was originally the driveway location was going to be down here onto Warren Road, and after review and meeting with the county, the county's preference was to have that connection along Ridge Road here instead. The applicant has made a few other changes to the building, just as part of their normal kind of internal review process. But other than that, you know, pretty similar to what was approved, I think it was three years ago, when it was before the Planning Commission and Board. But the applicants are here together with their building committee if the Board has any specific questions about their plan.
Are there any Board questions for the item? Any Board questions? Harry, I think we're covered in space.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Just a check, please, Harry. Yeah, I had a question. So Ridge Road, I read in the Planning Committee minutes, is a dirt road there. And isn't that where the natural beauty, whatever it's called, road starts? And are we saying it's going to stay a dirt road? Is that...
Yes, that's the proposal as it exists today. So no change in the natural beauty road status will occur. And just maybe for your information, a natural beauty road can be a paved road.
Oh, okay.
Although ideally, they're typically gravel roads. There's a few examples, certainly in Oakland County, where there's some natural beauty roads that are either fully paved or partially paved. But the intent is keep them gravel, but sometimes they are paved.
I can almost guarantee you that if we even suggested that we were thinking about paving from Warren to Joy, there would be pitchforks and torches in the audience, large quantities.
I assume you'll be providing car washes to all the parishioners every Sunday? Is that how... As they leave? And then there was some talk about the burms and that we're not going to have burms to... Where... I see the subdivision to the right, but is there any to the north or to the west?
Really, to the north, it's largely undeveloped at this point in time. There are some kind of larger lots, a little bit further north of here. Hampton Ridge South is over here, kind of to the northwest corner of the project. There's a vacant property here. And then Pheasant Ridge Development, which is at the northeast corner of Ridge and Warren, is right here. They're the closest residential to the site. They have birmingham and trees along the western property border of their site as well. And then the applicant is proposing to construct some burms along Ridge Road that, as you can see from the landscape plan, will also be planted.
And then where were the burms that... In lieu of burms, it's just... Is it on the north and west side that you're just keeping the natural woods?
Yeah, on the... That's literally over here on the west side. You can see a heavy tree line along this creek, and then tree line along the creek and wetland area here that screens Warren Road as well.
Thank you. Any other Board questions?
How large is the congregation? How many members roughly?
We have roughly 120 members, baptized members. Children, so...
Services are on Sunday primarily?
Sunday and Wednesday.
How many on Sunday?
Probably about 60 people. Plus the children.
You're excited.
We are. I'm happy to be a part of this city, to tell you the truth. I'm looking forward to building a church there. After three years of, you know, looking into this and, you know, talking about it and discussing it and everything, I'm excited about starting this summer.
Church located someplace else before?
It is. It's in Redford, Redford, Michigan. Five mile on Fox.
Hoover West.
The building's too small for us, that's the reason. So we needed, you know, to expand it more. And so we're... The whole membership is kind of excited about getting started on something new and different.
You hope to start this year?
I'm hoping so. I'm hoping in July, actually. Yep, yes, sir.
May not want to embarrass us, but how do you pronounce your last name?
Buffa.
Oh, so you had it right.
Right.
Okay, beautiful.
Are there any additional Board questions? Okay, very good. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item... Moving on, item G2. So you guys can stay if you're having trouble sleeping, or go ahead and take off. Now would be the time. You bet.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Item G2. Consider repeal of Canton Township Code of Ordinances, subchapter... It's not a subchapter, it's just Chapter 34, Article 4, entitled Vacant Property Registration and Maintenance, Sections 34 through 81 and 34 through 96. Oh, yes.
Mister Supervisor, I move to repeal Canton Township Ordinance... Canton Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, Article 4, entitled Vacant Property Registration and Maintenance, Section Number 34-81 through Number 34-96.
Second.
In response to a growing number of vacant foreclosed homes in our community following the 2007 recession, the Township Board adopted an ordinance regulating vacant properties in 2010. The economic conditions, which were the basis for that ordinance being enacted, would no longer exist, and the current volume of vacant properties make the ordinance unnecessary. The vacant homes that presently exist are all monitored by Public Safety's ordinance staff, whom also agree that this ordinance is now unnecessary. The ordinance officers use the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code, together with our nuisance ordinance, to correct any deficiencies that arise with the vacant property. As such, staff recommends the ordinance be repealed. Thank you, Diane.
Question... May I? Mister Foster, this is a first reading, if I'm not mistaken?
It is, and that was the revision that we made in the revised RBA. So there would be two readings, first reading this meeting, second reading at the next meeting.
So at that point, at this point then, may I make a motion to table? I would like to... Would that be appropriate? Correct? So then I move to table for consideration the ordinance amendment for a second reading?
Probably have discussion first, and then...
Okay, I apologize.
And then approval of the original motion, and then table.
Sorry?
Do we not have discussion? And then approve the motion as originally presented? Then we table that?
Correct. I think if you look at the revised RBA, we revised the language in the resolution as well. So the first resolution is to introduce and hold the first reading, and then after discussion the second resolution would be to actual table it for a second reading at the next meeting.
Okay. But af... That was after we would have a vote? We wouldn't...
Because we're approving the first reading?
Just introducing it tonight, we're going to approve that, and then table it for the second reading to come in the future.
Okay.
Is there any Board discussion at this time?
I was just interested in understanding what was the meat of these ordinances that were no longer necessary?
The why we don't need the ordinance?
What was it that gave us that we don't need anymore?
You know, I think the graph depicts the picture. We had 394 vacant foreclosed homes in 2010, and we've got 44 this year. It's additional work for our staff to track and maintain, you know, a special class of vacant properties when simply the inspectors, working with the ordinance enforcement staff from Public Safety, have a good handle on 44 homes.
This was... I'm just trying to understand what the ordinance gave us to begin with.
Oh, it required vacant properties to be registered, and at the time, these were primarily bank-owned properties. If you recall, there were a lot of homes in foreclosure at the time, a number that went into disrepair. And despite our best efforts, the banks were not responding to our requests to get the buildings repaired.
So we will no longer require them to be registered, but Public Safety will still know about them and keep track of them?
Correct. They'll work together with the building inspection staff to stay on top of the ordinance issues.
Okay, thank you.
Additional Board questions, comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G3. Second reading.
All right.
Second motion to table. Clerk is comfortable with how we're doing.
Clerk is concerned because I believe the first question was whether or not we wanted... I mean, I moved to introduce... Okay. I made an improper motion beginning. All right.
Would you like to modify or recall, as the motion maker?
So technically, the motion I made was with the original board packet. So I did literally, if we... The verbatim motion I made was to repeal the ordinance. So the question that was just voted on was to repeal the ordinance, but we need two readings. What I should have moved was to introduce and hold the first reading of the ordinance.
Could I do this? Could I make a motion to rescind the motion we just approved? And with that, Clerk Segrist can then give us the proper motion to be voted on.
That was really the second.
I need a second of the motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Those in favor of rescinding the motion we just approved, state aye.
Aye.
Good, motion carries now. Clerk Segrist, if we could.
All right. Mister Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of an ordinance amendment to repeal Canton Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, Article 4, entitled Vacant Property Registration and Maintenance, Sections Number 34 through 81... 34-81 through Number 34-96.
Okay.
Those in favor of the corrected motion, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Clerk Segrist, if we could have the table motion.
All right. I move to table for consideration the ordinance amendment for a second reading on June 27th, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor of the table motion, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I apologize, everyone.
That kind of shows how much we listen to your motions.
Don't raise, guys. First we got tonight, we're doing great. Okay. We're fine. Okay, here we go. G3 is our next item, sir? G3 is next up.
All right.
Would be consider award of contract to Braco Excavating Company, LLC for the Hampton Court and Briarfield Street Water Main Replacement Projects.
All right. Mister Supervisor, I confidently move to award a contract to Braco Excavating Company, LLC for the Hampton Court and Briarfield Street Water Main Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed $911,675, and to authorize Supervisor to sign the contract on behalf of Canton Township.
Do we have a support from Treasurer Slavens? In summary, in 2010, water master plan identified a number of projects necessary to meet the existing and future water demands of our customers. In addition to the master plan, staff is constantly evaluating locations that are experiencing multiple main breaks in a relatively small area. Two locations of high priority for replacement are the water main in the Hampton Court subdivision as well as along Briarfield Street and Forest Brook subdivision. These were identified due to several recent water main breaks. Staff is recommending award a contract to Braco Excavating Company, LLC for the Hampton Court and Briarfield Street Water Main Replacement, in the amount as presented, including a 10% contingency. The project previously included replacement of water main on Michigan Avenue west of Beck. That work has been removed from the recommendation due to permitting and constructibility issues. The award amount reflects this change. Is there any additional discussions or questions? I see Mister Miller's left. I think this may impact him. It's in front of his house.
So we can say... So that we can say on the public record, we discussed... So we can say, so that we can say on the public record, we discussed the replacement on Briarfield 1846, since that's a address of note frequently at township board meetings, is roughly here, on Briarfield, and we will be replacing the water main from Ardmore to Applewood, in front of 1846 Briarfield.
But when was this subdivision originally built?
This would probably be, I'd say around 1980, maybe early 80s? It is not.
Just the last part about the water main on Michigan Avenue, west of Beck Road, that's totally separate from this Briarfield work? Is that gonna be addressed at a later time?
It will. The issue, the issue there was, that is an existing asbestos cement pipe, and the technology that's being proposed for all these projects is a non-invasive technology, where in essence, they pull a new pipe through the existing pipe, and the DEQ had some concerns about leaving fractured asbestos cement pipe in the ground at those locations. So we've been working with them to try to resolve those concerns and come up with a best practice to solve it. So those will be coming back, if not later this year, more likely next year, to do those replacements under our water master plan.
Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Carries, moving on, item G4. Consider award of a contract to Northwest Consultants, Inc., for construction engineering services for the 2016 Water Main CIP projects.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to award a contract under the existing master services agreement to Northwest Consultants, Incorporated, for the 2016 Water Main CIP construction engineering services, in an amount not to exceed $44,880.
Second. Summary, Northwest Consultants, Inc., was one of seven pre-qualified engineering consultants retained a few years ago by township following a request for qualifications process. The award of construction engineering services is part of the 2016 Water Main Capital Improvement Program. Projects are about to start construction. These projects include Hampton Court subdivision, Briarfield, which we just spoke about, replacement, as well as the Plymouth High School Water Main Extension Project. The total construction engineering cost for these projects is $44,880, as been stated, to be funded from the water capital construction account. Are there any board questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, moving on, G5. Consider approval of a budget amendment and award of a contract to Al's Asphalt Paving Company for township parking lot improvements at Independence Park.
Item is in two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to award a contract to Al's Asphalt Paving Company, in the amount not to exceed $602,322, and to Northwest Consultants for $13,500 for the 2017 Canton Township Parking Lot Improvements, and issued the following purchase orders to Al's Asphalt Paving Company for the amount listed above, and Northwest Consultants, Incorporated, for the amount stated above. Thank you.
Support from Treasurer Slavens. Each year, engineering service staff work with leisure service staff to prioritize various parking lot improvements across the community. This year, the highest priority project, based on pavement condition, is the replacement of asphalt parking lot at Independence Park. A budget of $600,000 was approved, with the exception that the construction costs would likely be more than what was budgeted, and the budget amendment would be necessary, should the board desire to proceed with this project. Staff is recommending award of Al's Asphalt Paving Company in the amount of $615,822, including a 5% contingency for Independence Park Parking Lot Reconstruction Project. A budget amendment of $50,550 is required to fund the project from the Community Improvement Fund, as a preliminary engineering for this project of $34,727, was awarded by the board on the 214-17 meeting, and used a portion of the $600,000 budget. Is there, are there any board questions? Is there any board question? Go ahead, Michael.
I just, I noticed that Al's came in significantly under the next lowest. I assume, you know, we've had conversations obviously with the vendor, we're 100% certain that we're okay with the work, and there's not gonna be...
Yes, and they've done other work for the township in the past, and performed satisfactorily.
None, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G6.
Before we move on to G6, can we pay for it real quick?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm not throwing stones on that. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment to the Community Improvement Fund, increase revenue to the account listed, the Community Improvement Fund balance appropriation by $50,050, and to increase the expenditure to the account number listed by $50,550.
Second. All in favor of the motion to clean up the books for Ms. Trumbull, state aye.
Aye.
Those seeing none, motion carries, item G6. Consider approval of First Amendment to the 1994 Ground Lease Agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, for an existing cellular antenna located at the township-owned communications tower on this property.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the First Amendment to the 1994 Ground Lease Agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC of 575 Marozgo Drive, Atlanta, Georgia 30324, and further authorize the township supervisor to sign the amendment on behalf of Canton Township.
Second.
This is a good news story here. There was, the current lease agreement with New Singular Wireless expires April 2019. Past several months, township staff has been in discussions with third-party MD7, acting on behalf of New Singular Wireless, to negotiate an extension of current lease. Staff has completed those negotiations and recommends the board to approve the First Amendment to the 1994 Ground Lease Agreement, thereby granting an extension of the lease by 30 years, with increasing the average annual leases payments to, or by, $37,737. So over the next 30 years, nice little kick in cash for us. Are there any board questions or comments? Go ahead, Stephen.
So is this no longer AT&amp;T? Did they sell this?
Right. It was, yeah, originally constructed by Ameritech Bell, and then became AT&amp;T, then became now New Singular.
But I'm just saying, for my only personal reasons, is that if it's AT&amp;T, I just wanted to say I am an AT&amp;T employee, but because I'm not getting any financial benefit from this, legal says I can vote on it, but I'm not even sure this is AT&amp;T anymore.
It's New Singular Wireless now.
Separate entity, okay. New Singular, interesting. Thanks. Well, there was an old Singular, but I didn't know someone came out and did New Singular now. I wonder what they're into.
Comments, questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G7. Consider approval of bid award for Summit Fitness Center carpeting replacement.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to award the bid for the Summit Fitness Center carpeting replacement to Independent Carpet One at 1400 North Wayne Road in Wesleyan, Michigan 48185, in an amount not to exceed $25,337, to be paid from the account number listed, the Buildings and Improvement Fund.
In summary, this carpet needs to be replaced. If you go over, take a look at it, it's time. Are there any board questions or comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G8. Consider approval of bid for award for Summit on the park locker room renovation.
Supervisor, I move to award the bid for the Summit Locker Room renovation to Envision at 28036 Oakland Oaks Court in Wixom, Michigan 48393, in the amount of $175,600, to be paid from account number listed in your packet, the Capital Outlay Building and Improvement.
Good. In April 2017, bids were solicited for Summit on the park locker room renovation and door replacement in the women's aquatics locker room. The fixtures and finishes in this locker room were installed in 96, are original to the building, and are now extremely worn and dated. Therefore, we have this item this evening. Is there any board comments or questions regarding this? Go ahead, Stephen.
I noticed that the amounts were more than we had budgeted, put in the budget, and so that you're deferring some other stuff to pay for it. Was that just us estimating it, or was this design firm giving us bad information about the costs?
Based, the costs that we used were based on the costs that we, when we redid the men's locker room two years ago, but costs have risen dramatically based on the construction environment since then.
Everybody's working, which is good news. Very good. Any additional comments, questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye. Consider authorization with Kickers of Canton LLC for restaurant operations at the Canton Sports Center.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to authorize a five-year participation agreement with Kickers of Canton LLC, with a mutual option of an additional 60 months, extension for restaurant operations at the Canton Sports Center.
Second. Summary, Kickers of Canton LLC is the current provider of restaurant operations at Canton Sports Center, and has done in exemplary manner, done so in exemplary manner. Kickers has a desire to invest $106,000 in capital into the facility, in order to continue growing the business. Kickers approached leisure service staff about a new contract to lengthen their agreement, giving them time to earn the investment back, or to earn their money back on the investment they were making. Due to their success and ensure, and to ensure mutually beneficial and successful continuation in the delivery of services, both parties have proposed modifying the terms and extending the length of the current contract, which is due to expire in 2018. As a result, leisure services are recommending the authorization of a new five-year contract ending 2021, with Kickers of Canton LLC, a mutual option of an additional 60 months extension for restaurant operations at the Canton Sports Center. Are there any board questions or comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G10. Consider approving three-year animal control services contract.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to accept the bid proposal and approve a three-year contract with Varmint Police, Incorporated, at 12749 Tuttle Hill Road in Willis, Michigan 48191, in the amount of $5,053.44 a month, from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2020.
Support.
Summary, Canton has utilized a private contractor to provide animal control services in the community for 20-plus years. This method of service has provided, proved to be both efficient and cost-effective. The current contract expired May 31, 2017, prompting the township to solicit new bid proposals. Varmint Police has been under contract with Canton for the past 18 years, and was the only vendor to submit a bid proposal. Varmint Police, Inc., proposed a three-year agreement at a monthly rate of $5,053.44, reflecting no increase in the price since 2008. Varmint Police has done an excellent job of providing timely humane animal control services, and Public Safety is recommending a three-year contract be approved, covering the July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2020 period. Comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G11. Consider approving a second public safety IT position.
Let me see. Mr.'s, sorry, I'm having a hard time finding my model resolution. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a second public safety dispatch and system supervisor to be filled. Upon approval of this request, utilizing funds currently budgeted in the 2017 police and fire administrative civilian salaries accounts.
Second. Public Safety Department is requesting to fill a second new public safety dispatch and system supervisor position, created and approved by the Merrick Commission, March of 2017. This position is a grade six on the non-union classified employee salary grade system, with a current pay scale range of $57,668, up to $74,967. The Human Resources recently established an eligibility list for this newly created position, from which this new opening would be filled. There's additional supporting background and details here, and I think this in part ties into our IT study that was recently completed as well, not so much, not directly. But in improving the efficiencies in the Public Safety Department, is there any board questions or comments?
Just, so, it mentions in the background a second position, two positions to be filled. Does one exist already, and we're adding a new position, a second one, or are we adding two?
Little confusing, but yes, there would be, we're adding two. So what happened was, in late last year, our IT, we had an IT position with IT Specialist with Public Safety, she resigned from the department. That position was established 15 years ago. Since that time, we've added a tremendous amount of technology into the police and fire departments. It gave me the opportunity to evaluate the position, and we've tied additional responsibilities onto it. Adding the second position allows us to have duplicate coverage of our dispatch center, and then also cross-training in the event one is on vacation, one is out of town, et cetera, so that we don't have that gap or lapse in getting systems up and running.
One is a renaming or recategorizing of the current IT, and then adding a second FTE, so...
That is, yes, sir.
Questions, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G12. Network switches implementation assistance.
Supervisor, I move to waive the request for proposal requirement and approve a purchase order to work cited, in an amount not to exceed $20,000, for networking equipment, configuration, and development services.
Support.
IT Services Division seeks third-party technical assistance with the configuration and installation of the Dell networking switches purchased January 2017, to replacing the existing age, aging, and unsupported Cisco networking equipment. At that time, at the time that the purchase, it had been requested of Dell to provide pricing for implementation, services assistance in the migration from Cisco, the existing Cisco network equipment to the Dell equipment. A proposal of $67,400 was provided to the township by Dell. As the cost seemed excessive, IT Services chose to explore alternative solutions, and a request for purchasing approval was not made in January. At this time, IT Services requesting approval from township board to purchase configuration services installation assistance from work cited company, Wixom, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $20,000, which supports the suspicion that our original bids were not very competitive. So is there any board questions or comments? See, no. Go ahead, Stephen.
Good job on finding a new, cheaper solution. They've done a good job at the water tower, are the water doing work? Is that where they came from?
Yeah, we got their name. They were a subcontractor with that project, and that's really how we got to know them. We got comfortable using them, so we asked them to look at our scope of services on what we were looking to do, and they, the rate that was quoted to us, we were pretty comfortable with, we talked about that, but the amount of hours that they thought it was gonna take to implement was really the question mark, and they came back in and said, yeah, it should take about a quarter of the time that these other people quoted. We've been very happy with their services with the water tower installation, and this is really key to help getting all this up and running, additionally to monitor it without having to go out. having to go out on field to monitor all those numbers.
Great. Further board questions or comments? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that concludes our formal agenda for this evening, in terms of general calendar items. Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, big weekend is coming up, eh? We've got, I think that the newest, most exciting, I mean, there's a lot of exciting things happening this weekend, but the ninja what?
America's Ninja Warrior will be on site Friday and Saturday. Warped Wall, there'll be a kids', kids' course and an adults' course. So I expect, and we'll see all board members participating in this activity, right?
Can we go on the kids' course?
Lots of new activities, lots of fun this weekend.
John will be serving pancakes.
Oh, on Saturday, the 17th, from 7:00 to noon, the Canton Lions Club Foundation will be, I think it's the 23rd year, hosting a pancake breakfast at the Heritage Park Pavilion. On Friday night, the Firemen hold their spaghetti dinner, and then on Saturday morning, the Lions Club will take over. Last year, we had almost 900 people. It was a great fundraiser. We raised almost $2400 to help those individuals, mainly children, who need eyeglasses and/or hearing aids. So it's a great event, great pancakes. If you show up, I will even make one in the form of a Mickey Mouse for you.
And Rotary will also be doing a fundraiser with their beer tent area as well. Which will be in the amphitheater area this year.
Want to make sure to wish every, all the fathers a Happy Father's Day on Sunday, and enjoy the Liberty Fest this weekend.
Thank you. Call for motion to adjourn. Second. In favor, state aye.
Aye.
Meeting's concluded. Thank you.
Thanks.